All right, it is 6:30. We will call the Monday, October 13, 2025 City Council Meeting to Order. If you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
Have no additions tonight, Mayor.
Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. That will take us to public comments. If there's anybody who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. And if you could, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Chulagu, Coldwater Crossing, or Coldwater X. It's come to my attention that, I guess, my land's been targeted by the city with no notice, and which disappoints me. I've been a property owner in Hollywood Township since 1990. But when I bought my large tracts here adjacent to Mayor, I did explain right away to the City Council that what my intentions were, and that was to be... I would commit to the Dakota Trail in Lucine being joined. And that was going to be a nest egg for me as far as making money and selling that. And Three Rivers is still planning on doing that. And so I don't know what your future plans are, but that should be in consideration. I had also offered up two parks in return for me to develop 28 houses on the Seventh Edition. And I did explain I was going to be putting my house in the middle of my property, and that this middle trail up along this, okay, this quote-unquote "road", that is not a road. There's a Supreme Court ruling on that. But at any rate, you know what? We have a lot of issues. The city still owes me approximately $3 million bucks for the Seventh Edition. I have a bond outstanding, as well as the letter of credit, which it appears to me, but I don't know for a fact, that you gave it to Loomis, who is not my partner. We had no discussions on any of what he supposedly gave you guys. And that should be of concern for you guys, because the city has no easements on my land. And Loomis put that pond on my property so far off where it should be. It does not join to any of the stormwater system. And I'm not giving it to anybody. And I have a wetland credit program going myself. And the city has seized my one pond. It ends in 3-0-0. And it's not part of the Seventh Edition. And I don't know about your wetland credit program that is based on surface acreage, but I've never heard of that. See, all of them are based on volume-based. And that one pond of mine is 16 feet deep for that reason. And it's my rock star pond. It's worth a couple million bucks in my eyes. And you might be able to knock it down to a million, but all you guys... Okay, phrases. First thing you do is you take it off, and you swear that you will uphold the U.S. Constitution and the great state of Minnesota's Constitution. And that Fifth Amendment clearly states that in no way, shape, or form is the government going to be able to come in and carve out any of your property without notice, without compensation, which you guys have done here. And along County Road 30, that was all my land. And the reason why it was is because the city, when they built the water treatment plant, did not get a survey, okay? And so the landowner, Benny Quas, at the time, his compensation, the city gave him all that land, rather than giving him back his land, his farmland. And now you guys have taken that. And it's just taken it without any notice, any consideration. It's against the law. It's against our constitution. And I'm not going to let that happen, okay? And I can't believe that you guys would not engage me, because I'm open to selling my land, okay? I've clearly stated that along that river, you know what? I want it to see it remain how it is. It's a great piece of land. And you know what? I've been a member in 1990 of the DNR Forest Stewardship Program. And so I understand these things. Water quality. You know what? The reason why you guys aren't paying for any sediment removal is because you're not removing any sediment. My ponds have been filled with 10 to 12 feet of silt. And I would request a closed meeting session on water quality, but I'll leave that open for right now. But the city's got some real issues there, and these are not holding ponds. These are my ponds, okay? And they were built there to have good water quality on my little lake, okay? And that's why I bought the land, okay? It's going to be my little estate, so to speak. And it bothers me greatly that you guys are not communicating what your plans are. And I'm willing to talk, but the city needs to have a survey first and foremost. And you guys let Loomis claim to have an overlay on my 28 parcels, a 32 parcel overlay, but if anybody actually would have counted, this is what you approved. He had 33 lots there, okay? I mean, come on. Is it one lot? No, it's a half an acre of my land, okay? It's 50, 70 grand? Who cares? It's just use. Okay? I mean, this is the little things that you guys have hanging out here. And I don't want to get in a big lawsuit with you guys, okay? But I just want what I have coming to me. And I'm not going to let anybody steal anything from me, okay? I've had to deal with Loomis. I went to jail because I bulldozed on my surveyed line, okay? I have over 17 surveys on my property, and I don't... And nobody produces one against me. GIS? I mean, somebody's making up all this GIS crap, and it's unacceptable, okay? So I beg of you guys to just have a closed-door session where we can, you know, talk about what your goals are. And I think we could reach an agreement, you know, or an understanding. But we need to start there. I don't have any clue what you guys are up to. But I do know that you've grabbed land, you're changing my zoning, and, you know, it's getting costly. And like I said at the last meeting, I had a 48-acre piece of land, and the value shot up to just shy of $900,000. And it went from 40 acres down to nine. This is in Hollywood Township. So I lose a building eligibility, you know, only along the river. And again, I don't know where this is coming from. I don't know who's doing this. And if it fell under that DNR easement stuff, but I'm telling you guys, you don't have any easements on my property right now. And you should really talk to me about that, because what Loomis has presented, starting with the wetland delineation, who did that? It reads like I presented. I did not. It's not mine, okay? It contradicts my two wetland delineations, and it starts there, okay? And again, the water quality stuff. But I want to further the discussions with you people. I don't want to take up everybody's time here. And I do appreciate and respect what you guys do. And but, and I'm all for that river staying, you know, in its current condition for future generations. And but I do want to join up with the Lucine Trail. And that really is a payout for me. And if you guys want it, you're going to have to pay for it, is what I'm telling you. So I will leave it there, and I hope to hear back from you. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. With that, if there's anyone else who would like to discuss anything not on the agenda, please come forward. And seeing none, we will close public comments and move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Excuse me. Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. And with that, we will move to the first business item. Nick, if you'd like to make the introductions, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome Darren Schuler, Superintendent for the Watertown Mayor School District, back with us once again to give his State of the Schools update.
Wonderful. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members, and C. Administrator Johnson. Thank you for the opportunity, once again, to speak on behalf of Watertown Mayor Schools in our annual State of the Schools address. So hopefully fairly brief tonight, but just want to share some of the highlights. Next slide, please. Again, the purpose in which we do this presentation is just to strengthen the partnerships between the communities in our schools. And that's a really important relationship that we cherish. And again, share some progress and the great things happening at Watertown Mayor Public Schools. And in addition to focus on some of the strong... Focus on strong schools that fuel a strong community. So we think that's also very important. Real quickly, just a quick look at where we're at by the numbers. Right now, we have about 1,428 students, K through 12, 103 certified teachers. So certified basically means that they have a four-year degree in the area of education or in teaching. 38 paraprofessionals, and most of our paraprofessionals work with our special education students in a really high-level work there, working with those students. And we have about 30 members of our Kids Company staff, which is our childcare and preschool staff. We also have 17 food service staff between three buildings, and nine custodians, three technology team members, and two nurses across the district. So that's a little breakdown of our staff. As I've shared in the last couple of years, our strategic plan continues to be kind of our North Star in terms of where we're going as a district. Our strategic commitments there on the left. And on the right side, you can see our profile of a graduate, which again means that those six areas are areas in which we feel all Watertown Mayor graduates should leave our schools with. The next piece on that, the next slide, kind of focuses on one area of our profile, which is just partnerships in our communities. I just want to highlight real briefly, because I don't think a lot of people always know that currently, we have about 60% of our students in our high school who are seniors that are college-bound. The other 40% are looking at a trade possibly, or military, or some other avenue. But what's kind of unique right now is our work experience program has really grown immensely in the last five to six, seven years. So currently, this fall, we have 20 students who are out, part-time of their day, out and working in the trades in some form. And that's usually about half of their day that they're doing those opportunities. Eight students are working in the medical field. That might be a nursing home. It might be at the hospital. It might be at a clinic where they're working, having a work experience there. Childcare, again, we have three students working actually in our own childcare program. Three are doing farm work, so that may look, again, at a farm, a local farm here in our area. Four are working in restaurants and coffee shops and those type of things. Five are doing manual labor, and seven are doing customer service-type work. So again, these are students, typically juniors and seniors, who have completed the necessary coursework to have a work experience and are in good academic standing to do that. So kind of unique. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, I know back in August, we had a very tragic event in the Twin Cities with the school shooting. And I just wanted to highlight, I think, one of the things that folks don't always know is how secure our buildings are. One of the things that we have recently remodeled in our middle school and our elementary, these are their two front entrances. One of the things that we do requires that all parents, if they do, or any visitor, has to swipe their license. We do an automatic check to see whether or not the visitor has any violations on their record. Obviously, if you're a volunteer, you've already gone through that process, and you can gain entrance by just scanning your license. But if someone who's coming to be a visitor for a day has to go through the process of scanning their license and doing a background check before they can come in, that's done fairly instantaneously. But all of our front doors, we have one that's open, but the vestibules that you see there, the one on the left is our elementary. One on the right is the middle school, where it's, again, you have to be buzzed in order to get access to the office. You can't just get entry into the school. And those of you who haven't been in schools maybe for a long time, that is a pretty major change. It does at times feel a little bit restrictive. I think, you know, that's not the way of schools, but in order to keep our staff and students safe, that is our new method over the last couple of years, since we've made those remodels. And again, just a much more safer environment. We also have about 250 cameras throughout all four of our facilities that are monitored throughout the day as well. So pretty secure site. How are we doing, is the next question. Some cute elementary students there. Next slide, please. Just a little bit more, and we do an annual spring climate survey and how our staff, our parents, and our students are telling us how we're doing. We take a lot of pride in that feedback. 97% of staff agree, strongly agree, that we have a clear understanding of the district mission and goals, which is really important to me. It hopefully tells us and our school board that our staff understands where we're going as a district. We feel that's pretty important. 96% of district staff agree or strongly agree that we're very satisfied with the role that I'm performing in the district. Hopefully with satisfaction there being the key. 93% of district staff agree or strongly agree that our district provides effective academic supports for all students. And that could be intervention support for students who are below grade level, but also those mental health supports that are so key right now for all of our students, kindergarten through 12th grade. Our parent climate survey, which was given out last spring as well, 94% of respondents agree or strongly agree that they are very satisfied with their child's overall educational experience. 96% agree or strongly agree that their child has a connection with at least one adult in our school. And that, again, is a pretty unique piece, I think, that makes Watertown Mayor unique. And we're small enough in that every student has an opportunity to connect with at least one adult, which, again, pretty neat. And then lastly, you have a couple of students' climate surveys. Our third and fourth grade students are surveyed in the elementary. But 98% of students agree or strongly agree that my teachers believe that I'm capable of learning and provide me with challenging learning opportunities. So again, teachers feel strongly that they believe in all of their students. And the 97% of students in third and fourth grade agree or strongly agree that there are adults in the school that care about how they're doing. So again, just that whole caring and connections that our teachers make. Lastly, on the climate side, we have some high school students' survey results. And again, I know our high school staff is really proud of this as well, where 98% of high school students say they have a connection, again, with one adult in the building, at least one adult. 99% of our high school students say they have one classmate that cares about their success. And I think as we talk a lot about mental health, to have at least one person, either a teacher or a fellow student, that says, hey, I care about you, you know, that's a big deal. And 95% of high school students indicate that they feel safe at school. So again, kids are coming and feeling like they're able to learn and put everything else besides and be safe. Community education, just a quick update there. I'd like to share some of the unique things that are happening in our Community Ed program. We offered about 585 programs last year in Community Ed across the board. You can see the breakdown there of how many are broken down by seniors, adults, aquatics groups, youth groups, and our early childhood family education. Aquatics, as you can see, continues to be a huge boost recently, and the numbers continue to go up for aquatics. A lot of people accessing the pool, probably the same ones are accessing your new splash pad out here. It's definitely a hit. But the enrollment, as you can see, our numbers continue to go up post-COVID. And I think certainly people are getting back into classes and even onsite classes. And again, over 1,800, almost 1,900 youth participated in courses this past year. And on the right side, we have eight preschool classes right now. We have 112 students currently in our programs. We're Young Royals, which is awesome. And again, our Kids Company, Carrying Hands Childcare, is a huge boom right now. The numbers continue to go up. 244 students are in our childcare program. And again, that's from six months all the way to grade six. Obviously, we have before and after school, but the preschools, or infants and toddlers are there during the day. And again, we're trying to knock down our waitlist. We've expanded our childcare this last year. We had over 60, I think, 60 children on the waiting list to get into our programs. That's a huge concern, and there's definitely a need in both communities, Watertown and Mayor, for high-quality, center-based care. So we continue to look at ways in which we can expand that. Our biggest issue is literally hiring. We can't find people to fill these roles right now. We've had postings for probably two years, but that continues to be our biggest issue in terms of expansion, is just getting high-quality people in those roles. Real quickly, our MCA growth rate comparisons. And again, what I shared here is just a four-year average, which we're really excited about, and I shared a little bit on this last year. But we've looked over the last four years, and again, we saw a pretty significant dip during COVID. Coming out of COVID, you can kind of see how we have transitioned from 22 to last year's MCAs and 24 in terms of math percentage rates. So again, these are the percentage rates of students that have met or exceeded the standard in math. And then our reading rate is on the right-hand side. But really, what excites us is that the state average is certainly... We're outpacing that by quite a bit, but you can see that the districts on the... Below us, again, on our ratio, in the last four years, we've gained a little over 6% in math over the four-year period, excuse me, 14%. Our closest competitor, Glencoe Silver Lake, was at 6%. So we're nearly over-doubling the growth rate. And that really excites us. That tells us that our staff and our students are doing a fantastic job in terms of moving that dial. Reading rates, same thing there. We're the top district in the local area in the last four years in terms of growth. And you can see some of our neighboring districts around us as well. But again, it's very exciting to share this with our staff, and you're making a difference. And again, we're really proud of that. Last year, again, I know I shared a little bit on enrollment. As you can see, the history and where we have been, we peaked at 2017 at about almost 1,600 students. And we've slowly seen that drop continue to this year, where we're at about 1,428. Again, you know, and I appreciate Mayor Dodge and City Administrator Johnson for taking some time to meet with us in the last couple of months just to talk about growth and enrollment. It's been on our minds, and I know our Board Chair, Hunter Feltes, has also met with you. And again, it's just one of those things where, demographically speaking, we're not growing, and our numbers are staying, you know, pretty stagnant, but also, you know, trending downward. So again, that's still our major concern as we speak. And we certainly are talking to the Mayor, I've seen the Watertown City Council as well, about just what can we do, you know, to look at that as, you know, we're dependent on enrollment, and that's a big piece for us. So we can continue to look at ways to market and show people the great things that we are doing. But when we have limited folks, and again, we have some great private schools here. We have folks that do homeschool. So, you know, there's a lot of competition out there as well. But again, our retention rates are good. We're keeping the kids that are here. That tells us a lot. But again, we just need to continue to work on that upward enrollment trend. Again, to that end, one of the things that excites us as well is Niche.com is one of those school search sites that families look at when they're moving to communities to see, tell us a little bit more about your schools. It's really cool data. Watertown Mayor is really in the top 11% of Minnesota public school districts, which is really cool. Again, we're 11th out of 366 Minnesota public schools for best teachers. So again, they're rating your teachers, and that really comes down to the education level of your teachers, how many teachers have master's degrees, how many are going towards even further than their master's degrees, specialized licenses. They take all those licenses from the state, and they come out with a number that ranks us 11th. That's pretty impressive. And again, 40th out of 362 best districts in Minnesota, and 60th out of 382 best places to teach in Minnesota. So some really cool data to share as well. Just this past month, we learned that our elementary school has been named the Minnesota School of Excellence. And there's a Smiling Miss O'Connell, our elementary principal. But really, it's the work of that whole building in getting that designation, pretty unique. And again, we'll be celebrating in the spring with a celebration. I know certainly the folks, you'll be invited as well to attend that celebration for our students and staff. Also, something that we would share tonight, I haven't had the opportunity to share this since I've been here. It's my sixth year in Watertown Mayor. But we've had two National Merit Scholarship Award winners. And that, not award winners yet, but Riley Delaney, who is a senior on the left, is a commendable student, which means she's still in the running, possibly, to become one of those National Merit Scholarships. And Zack is, Loeman is a semifinalist, so he's moved up even further in the process. But again, you can see it's one of approximately 16,000 high-achieving high school students who have scored in the top 1% nationally on the PSAT test. So again, so pretty high flyers in our district. So again, having had a chance to do that, that was pretty exciting. I know high school principal, Mr. Henin, is very excited to share this as well, and you'll certainly see this out. We need to celebrate these kids. That's pretty cool. Also, we're continuing to do 111 Reasons to be a Royal. Some of you know Ms. Sissink, a middle school teacher in fifth grade, is shared there. But again, just, you know, our Watertown Mayor community has proven to be an invaluable support system for everyone who lives and works here. The importance of helping others begins not in our schools, but from our youngest to our recent alumni. Our students learn the value of community service and giving to others is the core value, which our students, during our students' time here at Watertown Mayor. So again, I know, Mr. Dodge, I know you're going to be writing one of these up soon. I know we got you on the... Anybody else in the council would like to do 111 Reasons to be a Royal, we'll take you up on that. And we'd love to publicize that, so thank you. And lastly, just again, some great ways to follow us on Facebook, Instagram, and myself on LinkedIn. So hope you can follow us. But any questions that I can answer for you?
Any questions for the Superintendent?
Just one real quick comment. It was nice to see your students coming down and utilizing their splash pad this year. I think it was three, perhaps even four times, that caught you out there.
Those childcare kids over the summer, that's a great avenue, so we appreciate that.
Yep, they all seem to really enjoy it.
Absolutely.
It was great having you.
Thank you. One other thing, too, we're looking, hopefully this spring, is to do some community outreach, some city cleanup. So I know we're reaching out probably to you, Nick, in regards to having high school students come over and doing some community service work, kind of a day of service. So we're in the preliminary stages of that, and we hope to come to Mayor and help out wherever we can. So think of some things that we could help you with, so.
Sounds good.
Otherwise, yes, we appreciate the partnership, and it's been great working with the Council and certainly Mayor Dodge as well.
Likewise. We appreciate you coming out. This is great just to get the state of the state and where everything's at. I just appreciate the open communication we're having now and getting together more often, I think.
Absolutely.
I think it's really valuable.
It is. I know at 1.2, we've talked about having one of our school board meetings here in your chamber, and just bringing a school board meeting to Mayor. I know that's something that we've talked a lot about. We just have to figure out the logistics. But again, just shows that partnership of, you know, we're not just in Watertown. We're here as well, so.
Yeah.
We'll pull that off.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I look forward to that. Perfect. Anything else for Superintendent Schuler? Well, thank you. I appreciate your time. Thanks for coming in.
All right. With that, we will move to approval of the 2026 prosecution contract with Carver County.
Thank you, Mayor. We've received the renewal prosecution contract with Carver County Attorney's Office, so we contract them for civil prosecution services. And just a quick recap, in 2023, the total amount in the contract was just a little over $2,000 at 2,091. In 2024, that dropped to $1,870. In 2025, that dropped even a little more to $1,847. And the 2026 proposed contract rate is $1,504.43. Where that comes from, just for some backup, Mark Metz was not able to make it. He is out of the office this week. So I'll do a quick pinch... So I'll do a quick pinch hitting here. So what, the big thing that they do it on is they take the number of cities in Carver County. They have the number of, try to blow this up a little bit. There we go. The number of cases and it's a case based over three-year average. So in there, they take all the cases from the prior three years, they'll average those out. And then the total proportion of those then goes into the formula calculation for how much each city pays. And you can see over the last handful of years that our caseloads have been decreasing. So that has earned us a bit shorter drop in the rate that we're being provided. So with that, any questions from council I may field?
Hearing none, then I'll look for a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-six prosecution contract with Carver County.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post him sign. Motion carries five zero. And with that, we will move to water tower mixer and SCADA equipment proposal.
Thank you, Mayor. We had talked about this at the last meeting. The water tower mixer was pretty well ago, but wanted additional information on the SCADA equipment proposal that had been included. And Greg and I did some digging on that. So the control box, there would be a control box that would be mounted in, inside of the water tower. From there, it could be include, or it could be routed to, into our dark fiber ring that we have and hooked up to our SCADA system that we have at the water treatment plant. The control unit on the water tower itself, you can manually control the mixer there, turn it on, turn it off. And then it would also provide values for monitoring as well, if that's working. And with the remote access, all of that would get ported in as well. Greg and I talked about it further and we're the belief this would be a good addition to our system. We've been working on integrating a lot of our SCADA equipment in this housing. So it would make sense to move forward with it. Greg, anything else you'd like to add on that?
Perfect.
Nick, could you remind us of the cost, please?
I was just going to ask that.
Let me grab that.
I think we had the mixer cost, but we didn't have the SCADA add-on cost.
Both.
Memos. So to replace the existing mixer in the, would be in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And the optional SCADA control box would be twenty-one hundred and three dollars.
So then is our whole system SCADA then?
This would connect up the water tower to it. I think we have some lift stations that are yet.
We have just that one out here, that one in Fieldstone, that lift station's not, two?
I think we have two that are still on the auto dialer system. When we get drops with fiber, then we can.
Would we get any deal in doing those at the same time?
So this, the KLM is the one who's doing this and they just deal with the water tower?
Okay, that answers that question.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then I'll look for a motion to replace the existing mixer in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars, along with the addition of the SCADA control box and the amount of two thousand one hundred and three dollars.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post him sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Thank you both. I appreciate it. With that, we'll move to adoption of ordinance two fifty, amending the City Code, Chapter ninety-five, regulating hot air balloons in city parks.
Thank you. At the last council meeting, we introduced this ordinance and as required by law, we have to have a ten-day period where we post the ordinance amendment. And that was posted to our city's website immediately after the last council meeting. So we are ready to go for final adoption.
Wonderful. I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance two fifty.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post him sign. Motion carries five zero. And with that, we will move to city council reports. Councilmember Health, anything to report on?
Had a personnel committee meeting today. Finished, I think we finished up on the personnel policy. It will be typed up and ready to go.
Next meeting, we'll do a workshop on it.
And had a planning commission meeting, still working on zoning and ordinances. Probably have that finished up by the end of the year, hopefully. Fingers crossed, doubtful. I don't know.
Went from hopefully to doubtful.
It's a lot.
Perfect. Thank you. House member, something to report on?
I have nothing.
House member McNeely?
Nope.
House member Jackson?
Meeting tomorrow.
Wonderful. And I just had the same, I was in the personnel committee meeting with Chad this afternoon. And like you said, the personnel policy, our draft proposals should be at our next meeting. So with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post him sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll jump right into the workshop and call to order two thousand twenty-six budget update.
Doesn't want to stick around for budget, huh? I tell you. Two thousand twenty-six budget update. So we've got a couple of things here and then I'm going to do a two thousand twenty-five year-end projections update. So we'll get to you. Very minor updates in the budget formation process in the general fund under expenditures. Under the general insurance, that's been decreased from, what's eighteen thousand to thirteen thousand five? And you'll see this on the water and the sewer end as well, not a decrease, but an increase. So in looking at our proper, our workman's compensation insurance, it appears that all of the public works were entirely lodged within the general fund, even though they have duties that pertain to the utilities. So reallocating that workman's comp insurance to be proportional to what the payroll is and making those adjustments. So that's the only change I have in the general fund. On the water fund end of things, that here's where you'll see it right here. It got increased from thirteen thousand to compensate for that reallocation of insurance on that end. On the sewer end, bumped, didn't have the mount on there. Let me go back. So this was at five sixty, but looking to bump it up to five seventy-five. Our sewer revenues are coming in higher than anticipated on the budget. So this reflects more along the lines of what we're seeing for revenues coming in. And then down here on the insurance, like you saw in water, increase from twenty-one thousand, twenty-four thousand five hundred for that allocation. And then on the storm sewer end, slight increase on here, I believe that was, was eighty-two bumping up to eighty-six on there to reflect the storm sewer fees that we're seeing come in. And that is the long and short of this round of budget updates. Any questions on any of that?
Nope.
No, thank you.
With that, we will go back into that. Year-end predictions. Did this last year just because we had some variation going on in the budget? I want to break, wanted to make council aware of it, but I thought it was a good practice. So I'm going to do it to you again this year. Thank you for bearing with me on all this financial information I like to give you guys. So we'll cover two thousand twenty-five year-end predictions for the major funds. And those include the general fund, water, sewer and storm sewer fund. For general fund revenues, the original budget was one million one hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and predicting a year-end of one million two hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars or a difference of ninety-eight thousand nine hundred above budget. The bulk of where that's coming from, building permits, once again, outperforming the budget by about seventy-five thousand dollars, I'm predicting we'll end at. And then there, the remainder is a various number of other categories, a couple thousand here, there, throughout the remainder of the general fund budget that we're seeing revenues come in slightly higher on to make up the rest of it. So we're looking good on that front. On the general fund expenses end of things, the budget being the same as the revenues, predicted year-end of one million one hundred and forty-six thousand two seventy-five. So a decrease of nineteen thousand coming in under budget. Bulk of those, we're seeing those coming in consulting services, so auditing, engineering and legal, and legal are down by about fifteen. Planning services is up by fifteen, but that's our zoning update. We initiated that. That's what would be about twenty thousand dollars, we thought. But based upon the, what the work he's been doing, it'd be about fifteen on the whole. And then if we recall, we have the grant from the CDA where we'll be getting ten thousand back on that. Building inspection services up by fifteen thousand five hundred. And this is reflective of what we saw on the revenue side for building permits being up by seventy-five thousand. We have more building permit activity. We have more building inspection that goes on and they go proportionally. Streets are down by thirteen thousand and parks by ten due to staff turnover because we've had two-staff situation for a chunk of the year. We're realizing some savings in those areas. And then various departments up or down slightly to balance the remainder of it in the general fund. So overall, we're looking at ninety-eight thousand nine hundred above budget on revenues with a decrease in expenditures of about nineteen thousand. So a bit over a hundred thousand, a hundred and ten thousand on the whole. This graph here shows trend history that we've had, starting in two thousand twenty on this end and then going to two thousand twenty-five on this end. What this tells you is the orange is the budget figure, so that's where the budget is at. And then our actual fund balance is in black and then where our fund balance policy says we should be. So if we're above that yellow line, we're in really good business. But that's our bare minimum where we want to be. But as, if we continue to see these general fund revenues over expenditures like we're seeing, give preliminary thought if you want to transfer money out of the general fund into other areas to supplement. It would, it could be CIPs, it could be other areas where you could switch those funds to if we're seeing that. There'll be one-time shifts. We don't want to make tales of any of this because some years the budget might come right on the nose and there's nothing to transfer over at that point. But as long as we're riding pretty well up here versus down here, we could certainly think about even next year, make a transfer of some way, shape or form. To the water fund, with an, water fund revenues with an original budget of five hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven sixty, predicted year-end of five twenty-one two sixty. We're once again seeing water usage on the lower side. I should have brought that one up. Take a quick look. So we've been keeping track of residential usage and residential irrigation non-usage on that. And long story short on these, actually the ones to the right are better. So residential water, we've been seeing just a peak in two thousand twenty. And then over time, it's just, I think, just conservation efforts of people have been kicking in. So we're not seeing growth, even see, we're seeing new houses go up. Residential irrigation here, here is where we're seeing, back in nineteen, we saw a low and then we've had four years of higher irrigation usage. And then the last two years have been lower irrigation usage. So that's where we're seeing that fluctuation in the water fund is the fluctuation in the irrigation side of things. And here is the commercial usage, two thousand twenty-one, it was on the higher side, but then it's since flattened out to what it historically has been in there. So the big culprit is this guy right here going from way high up here. That's where rates were set at, figuring this is the norm, but then they've dipped down on that. So that ties into our budget here, difference of, so predicted year-end of five twenty-one two sixty, a difference of sixteen thousand five hundred below budget. Water sales are down, I'm going to predict by seventy thousand on lower irrigation uses we saw. WAC fees are up by about thirty thousand to year-end, so that helps offset. And then we have, I had special assessment income that we weren't budgeting for, fourteen-five to round out, to offset some of that and some other things here and there within the budget. Interest income is likely going to come in higher, so that offsets there. So even though water sales are down because of the other revenues, it's buffering that, so it's not quite as bad. On the expense side of things, lucky to see a decrease in expenditures as predicted. Difference of sixteen thousand below budget, water treatment plant electric usage down by about seven. And then similar to the other funds, wages down by ten thousand due to staff turnover. So in the end, you've got, you're still losing money, but we did have planned losses for this year and next year as we go into two thousand twenty-seven with the debt falling off. And then we'll do the adjustment to the, the rate structure when we hit there. So we were planning loss, we're still in a loss, but it's not as bad with the water loss in general.
If you go back, can you go back one slide?
So WAC fee revenues, more houses built and budgeted, do we go zero? Can we budget number of houses or did, we did three?
We did three, we do three.
Okay.
Three houses we budget for.
Thank you.
Anything over and above?
Right. Okay. Thank you. So there's the water fund balances over time. Getting close to that fifty percent mark. But when we do the big utility rate adjustment for two thousand twenty-seven, that'll make sure we continue to stay above that policy mark of fifty percent. Even though, so fifty percent of policy on the utility funds, that's a very, that's a good, healthy bare minimum you would likely want to get to is three months' worth or twenty-five percent of your annual expenditures. So we're still doing all right in that front. It's just not as performative or as high performing as some of the other funds we've got. So look at that in, within the context of that. On the sewer fund with an original budget of six hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars with a predicted year-end of seven oh six, seven sixty or ninety-one thousand above budget. Expecting sewer use charges to be up by thirty-six thousand above budget. Interest income up by twenty-five thousand. Keep waiting for the water plant or the wastewater plant expansion to come in and then we will spend down reserves, which then will reduce the interest income because we won't have as much invested. But as that continues to ride, so shall the higher interest income earn because we haven't used the money. And then SAC fees, similar to water, up by thirty thousand more than built. On the expense side of things, the original budget of four sixty-six oh seventy-five with predicted year-end coming in at forty-two, four hundred and twenty-one thousand five seventy-five, a difference of forty-four thousand five hundred below budget. Again, ten thousand due to staff turnover. Wastewater treatment facility costs are down overall by about fifteen thousand. Chemicals, electric repairs and capital outlay all coming in lower than expected. And then we did have a line item for engineering in the amount of fifteen thousand. We haven't spent any of it and I don't anticipate we will with anything related to the sewer end of things. So revenue's coming in nicely as well as expenditures coming in less than we thought. So we're still riding this, but we plan to spend a huge chunk of this when we go for the wastewater treatment facility upgrades. So we're just holding that until the project takes place. On the storm sewer end of things, much quieter, original budget of eighty-nine thousand seven fifty, predicted year-end of ninety-one two fifty or fifteen hundred dollars above budget. On the storm sewer expense end of things, original budget of fifty-three thousand five hundred, predicted year-end of thirty-two thousand, a difference of twenty-one thousand five hundred. Engineering down by three thousand, repairs and maintenance down by thirty-five hundred. We put thirty-five hundred in the budget. Sometimes a little bit gets used, sometimes it doesn't. This year, we're just not anticipating a lot coming out of there, or hardly anything coming out of there. And then capital outlay down by fifteen and that's related to the sonar project. And a quick, real quick update on that. We're going to have some of the ponds sonared yet this year and then the rest in the spring is how they wanted to split it out. We have to do some brush hog work to get some tracks moved into some of those ponds. They were a bit overgrown than we thought for access pass, so we just need to get those in there. And then the company didn't quite have the capacity to hit them all at once this year. But then they'll come in next year and take up the rest. That did not copy over correctly because that is sewer fund balance. That's okay. There's storm, all right, that's, this should be storm sewer. Oh, come on.
Doesn't like you.
No, no, it doesn't.
Because we're all watching you.
So there's storm sewer fund balance is the correct graph for that. So that's where we're looking at for end of year. As we get into November, December, I'll give a quick update if anything changes drastically on that. Any questions on the year-end update?
Looks good. I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Great.
Anything else for Nick on that?
Thank you.
All right, then we will look at the new, new bay.
New Bay online portal utility billing proposal. So this came by, this came uh by us by way of New Germany. New Germany implemented this online portal system. It functions very similar to anything else you've created an account for, you sign up for an account, you have a portal you log into, it will show your uh utility billing amount, you can access your bill online, you can pay via text or email or by phone or by ACH. Provides all those options, people can still drop off their check or cash if they want to, that doesn't go away. But in here, uh we like this, uh we all paid, functionally works. Uh, it's not the easiest to navigate around, but it does work. Uh, this would also cover you uh permits, uh building permits, there we go. This would also cover building permits as well. So this would replace all paid as an easier option for people to go into to pay for stuff. Um, it provides that customer service portal where you can actually go back, check your utility bills, it'll keep a history of it. So if you want to say, well, what did I spend four months ago, it'll keep track of that. Helps on the administrative uh end of things, so we're not emailing peoples out, bills out as frequently, we're taking less calls. Well, well, we very much enjoy talking to our public, we really, really do. The less interruptions allows us to get more things done throughout the day. And we've had some, we've had some issues with our email uh option that we recently implemented. I don't want to go throwing too many companies under the bus. But we've had bills that got sent out a second time during the month for no explainable reason. People have had trouble opening their bills with the email system we implement that we thought was going to be better. So really just, it has not worked out nearly as well as we were hoping that was going to. Um, so we see this as an option that could really help out with this. New Germany reports that they've really enjoyed it, they, I think they have bought half of their citizens have signed up for it. Uh, they enjoy the interface, interface. Um, as part of that, you can send out email reminders, you can send out text message reminders to people, bills coming due, be reminded. In my perfect world, in our budget, we don't have any revenue generated for penalties because everybody's paying on time and uh they're getting that taken care of. So that's one more functionality that we can do with this. We can also send out text or email reminders that the newsletter is ready and available on the city's website, that they can look at it that way. I know previously we had talked the cost of printing the utility or the newsletter. It's in that four or five thousand dollar a year range. If we can get that all digital, then we're not printing it anymore and then we don't have to worry about that cost, that helps on that end. On the customer side of things, uh in the proposal, they actually had a couple of things incorrect. But I want to clarify, on the debit and credit card, it says the rate is three point nine five percent, that is incorrect. I cleared that up this morning when I caught it uh during our discussions, it was three point five percent. How that differs is all paid right now is three percent, so it would go from three to three point five if you're using a credit card payment. ACH is one ninety nine per ACH transaction. And how this works out on the utility billing end, between the three point five percent and the ACH, if you don't use any water during the month and you have zero usage, those two are equivalent. So on average utility bill on that at three point five percent is going to be about two dollars in credit card fee, which is about the same as the ACH. If you use more than zero gallons of water, it is going to be cheaper for everybody to take the ACH option. Because then, because the uh three point five is on the bill itself and that's the flat fee. So we would be recommending everybody, if they want to go with this, go with the ACH option at dollar ninety nine per ACH. One of the flip sides we have is right now, the ACHs are all, so this all integrates with Banning, which is our utility billing software. The flip on this is the ACH fee is a dollar ninety nine. Right now, we absorb the cost of ACH when they're pulled from the bank as a, as a bulk pull, which is about forty dollars per month. We pay for that through the bank and that is not charged to our customers as is. Right now, if you're signed up for a direct deposit, there is no direct deposit fee for doing that or direct pull fee. Whereas if they went to this, then it would go from nothing to a dollar ninety nine per transaction. So we want to make sure we're being open about the changes in all of that.
So you, people who currently do the bank pull now would be forced to move to this system.
We would encourage them to go to the system so we're not having two bank pulls that we're trying to reconcile and we might have accidents. Because they're going to be trying to pull on the new bay side of things. And then if we continue to keep having a list, there might be.
Would you be reaching out to residents to say, hey, we're moving to this new system and then sunset the other way?
We didn't think about a sunset period on that. We just want to try to encourage it, get as much as possible to people who are on direct, we can pull mailing lists for them, let them know this is now an option, they can get signed up for it.
But it's, it'll cost them more because now I have to pay a dollar ninety nine.
Yes, it will. Yes, it will.
That's why I feel like if you really want people to move, it's not a option.
You have to move.
You have to move or you're gonna keep it. Because in all honesty, like I probably wouldn't make any changes if I wasn't forced to. I'm just being honest.
Yes.
Because now I have to go into a new portal, create a login, when what I'm currently doing works fine for me, the fee, whatever. But you know, if I'm not getting charged that fee, I'm just being honest. That, that's one more step that now I have to do, even though I've already have it set up and I haven't had to do anything with it.
Yeah, the ACH too, so.
So that's just something to think about is, are we gonna move to this because then everybody, it's electronic, I think that's cleaner. But you don't have to say like, do it now, I mean, it could be like.
What's the total cost for the old system versus the new system for like a year? Is it comparable? I mean.
As far as what we're paying? Yeah, so the ci, the city's in on this, so they're waiving their monthly portal fee, they're waiving their setup fee. Uh, the only thing will, the city will be paying is this, uh this is actually not accurate as well, it's nine ninety nine per month, not nine ninety five. This would be what the city is pay, would pay per month to have the service available.
That's it?
Yeah.
I like it, I mean, I think that it, it's a good option for people and to get, uh, I mean, I like the paper copy of my, of the newsletter because it just makes me read it. I don't know if I would open up the newsletter if I had an email.
We can send aggressive text messages reminding you.
Yeah.
To read your newsletter.
Right, I like this because you have access to your bill and everything online, whereas you're kind of paint, I don't have the ACH, so I, I don't have the automated. So I have to go and find the bill, see how much and then put it in there. It's not like in there for me to see and just pay it there, which is all other billing systems, all, you know, MetroNet, Electric, they all, I can go on and see my bill and see exactly what I'm paying, I like that a lot.
I'm down, I think it's streamlined things.
Right, I think you guys just have to make a decision.
Should be an option.
No, it can't be.
Because people, like Nikki said, like people aren't gonna.
I, I won't, I probably wouldn't move over. I'm just being honest, okay?
I, I, I agree, I, I, I loathe, I loathe the idea of forcing people to pay a little bit more, but.
Isn't there a percentage you pay when you do it online?
Yes, with all paid right now, if you go in and pay by phone or by credit card, I think it's, well, it's the credit card transaction is three percent on it already if you're doing it that way.
That's why we do check right now, I don't want to pay the fee.
I don't know what I set up a long time ago, but you guys auto take my money every year, month, so. It was through a check.
Yeah. I've been meaning to set up auto and so we have to pay that stinking fee.
Well, I mean, what if you just, I'd be open to bringing this on for, as a better option for people that just pay online. And then you guys, we can make, have conversations about.
Make it like six months.
What to do with the other process. And then you can decide if it's, you know, something that you just sunset over time, you know, like with new people coming in, this is the option.
Yep.
You know, and people are grand, I don't know, people are grandfathered in, I don't know.
I think people will like.
Makes me wanna jump in and get my auto set up before.
Website that has history and more information for your individual house.
And if you sign up for the account on here, you're not required to pay by ACH or credit card.
Right, but you can still look at your bill like in Excel or whatever.
Put a check and throw it in the box.
Yep, I think people would really appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay, I can sign up for it but not pay for that.
Correct, you, you could sign up to see your bills and then you can drop a check off.
Well, I'm not doing that.
Could you put together a side by side comparison with the system today and this system? Get pros and cons, advantages. Um, I think it helped me to understand because I tend to agree, I think we should probably, if this is the way to go and this is more transparent and people can do more, that would switch over, I would think, instead of running two, but.
Well, I think there's three processes, well, there'd be three because there's the ACH that I'm signed up under. Then there's the all bill pay, all pay, which I don't do. And then we'd have this, so you get rid of all pay and this replaces all pay, correct? And then people still have the option of what I'm doing.
The only downfall is if I am running ACHs here and then the system's also signed, because if you sign up for this portal, you can sign up as an ACH. Going through for staff time, record keeping, who am I running ACHs for and who is new bay running?
So that's what I'm telling you, you need to sunset the process and get everybody onto this process.
But then this would just replace the all paid.
All pay and the, what I'm, whatever you call what I'm doing.
Yes, that'd be one system.
And I think you do that over a six month period or.
And it would replace the email billing system or the e-bill that we recently implemented that hasn't been working out too well.
That's what I'm trying to say is like, there's, yeah, there's two processes and you're gonna move to one. And get rid of, so you're not pulling, which I agree with you, but me as a resident, I probably wouldn't, if you didn't force me to do it, I probably would just keep it as is.
I think the trade off is you get a lot of good convenience out of it, it being an online portal, being able to access a number of things.
This is the only bill I receive that I actually enjoy because I get the newsletter. All the other bills I just wanted anyway, email. Again, just telling you how, what it's like to sit at my house.
We're all getting a picture.
Oh, look at Nikki, got her water bill.
I, I, I'm with you, I like getting it and opening it, looking at it, forcing me to read it, but I also throw it in the garbage right away.
Correct, no, I, I get it.
So, I'm with you, but not with you.
With this new one, isn't there a, there's a discount for going electric, so you can choose paper still. Right, is that what the e-bill is saying?
It says a twenty cent per bill waived by going.
Oh, the, those are if you signed up for e-bills.
Yeah, save paper.
There would be twenty cents, but it's waived, so it's not going to be included at all. There won't be a check mark that says save me twenty cents, it just will never be a part of it.
Right.
When you sign up for it.
It, will there be an option to have paper bills still?
No, you, no, you're not required to sign up for e-billing?
Yeah, I know, I'm saying like, can Nikki still get hers in the mailbox?
Yes.
If she wants to. Yeah.
If you want paper, you can get paper.
I'm just, just like how people want everything in the newspaper, you know, like.
It's fair, a lot of residents are gonna think like you, so it's good to hear this, I mean, it's not wrong.
It's just, no.
There's gonna be differing, I mean, people are gonna see their two dollar charge and be like, oh, you're forcing me to pay two dollars more, you know, or like you, they like.
People already think our water prices are high, so I mean. I, yeah, if you could come back with like an, like a plan, like on what you're thinking of timing. They're gonna want to force anybody into doing something, but you know, I don't want people to say, well, I'm not gonna pay because I want to sign up for this, so.
Budgetarily, if, if that two dollars is a concern, they end up paying the two dollars because it's on their end when they do it. On our end, if you wanted to look at something like adjusting utility rate structures, base fee, for example, you reduce the base fee by a dollar ninety nine.
Yeah, I, I think we should come to the table, we'll just like the whole scenario and then have an action plan on how to, how do we encourage residents to move over to this, especially the people that are on the current ACH sys, system. However, I'm billed or, you know, pay, you know, do you have their email addresses, like are we able to contact them?
Some.
Some? Because that's the other problem is how do you get ahold of some of these people?
Send a letter.
Yeah, but I.
Would be sending a letter, yeah, a hard copy.
For the ones that like to read it.
I mean, New Germany switched from a different system, did they get any pushback when they switched?
It was pretty well adopted, I think they have about fifty percent uptake.
I think it will be too, for the most part, especially in newer developments.
Yep.
You know, you'll have, you know, West Ridge and stuff, the, the older parts of town, you might have a little discrepancy, but that's not on you, Nikki.
Okay.
I'm just saying, generationally, it seems like the, the newer developments are younger.
Wow.
I would prefer it, it's how I, Watertown, or I mean, the water bill is the only one I pay differently than all my other bills. I would like.
And this is more convenient, so I, I'm not against it, I think it's a great, I think we just need to like have an action plan for people who are not currently paying through the all pay.
Yes.
Correct, all right, yeah, I want to get this in front, as long as everybody's nodding their heads, yes, this is a direction we want to go. Pursue those action plans further, bring something more concrete with a plan in place. If I had presented this and everybody goes, no, we don't want this, keep everything as is, then I wouldn't have had to go through the action plan process, but since everybody looks, consensus seems to be, let's go further. I'll get that pulled together.
Sounds good.
Perfect, thank you. With that, we can move to utility access for the Drew property. Thank you, Mayor, this one will be a quicker one. So got the map up here. We have Nick Drew's house right here, Dan Lippie's right here, City Limits ends right there and it goes like that and it goes like that. This house is in City Limits, this lot is in City Limits. Uh, there have been discussions historically on these properties. Uh, this blank lot has been put up for sale and we discovered this after we started getting some phone calls about how do we get things connected to it. Um, so that brought up discussions on how we get that there. I've spoken with a property owner here, they are open to having utilities come up and then in this way. However, that has to be a private agreement with that property owner, the city really isn't involved on that front. If this were to fall through for some reason, what are the other potential options? The other one would be to take the stubs from here, come across the city owned property here, crossover and in this way. So the purpose of the discussion tonight is, given this as a potential option, is city council okay with the potential to have service lines run across our property here to service?
Okay, I have a lot of questions. I wasn't at the planning commission meeting, so we've had this conversation before, there was a previous person that was going to purchase the property. Our last discussion was that whoever was purchasing that would be then paying the cost of making the connection.
Correct.
Is that still the case?
That is exactly what I would propose, whoever wants to come across here, this is the developer's cost to install those lines.
Okay, my other concern was, I know we've always talked about it and I'm not saying the, the remaining of the sixty second street has always been a, a, an interesting topic of conversation just for at some point, you know, are we looking at annexing the rest of those homes into the property or into the city?
At some point in the future, yes.
Correct, so if I, if I was, so would that, let's just pretend that that was annexed into the city next year. I'm just playing, I know it's not.
Rest of sixty seconds.
The rest of sixty seconds. The rest of sixty second, or is it sixty?
Sixty second.
Sixty. Is that where, what would we do? Is this gonna be like some unique situation where now this house is gonna be tied in, is is Nick Drew's property tied into water right now, or is it just sewer?
Just sewer.
Oh, just sewer. That's what it was.
Right.
The well, but the sewer line.
But he's grandfathered, they're grandfathered in.
Yes.
So my concern is, so now this one property is gonna have like an exception to the rule for everything.
Not really, cause they're paying for the line.
Well, I understand, but then is that gonna change flow if all of a sudden now we have, we're gonna probably come off of Seventh Street for the main water, if we ever annex in the rest of the line? And then that property is now gonna be standalone? Is that gonna create a dead end?
So.
Cause that's kind of a dead end to, you know, like, whatever. So here's my point. We made exceptions for Nick Drew's property a long time ago by annexing him into the city because they were having a hardship. We did this mock sewer law attachment line, so they can hook up to city sewer, cause they couldn't at the time. And now this other piece of property is an orphan, and it's in the city. So now we're just putting Band-Aids after Band-Aids on a variance and projects we did to solve a problem and not looking at it holistically. That's all I'm, I was, I'm not super thrilled to, even if they paid for it, I just think it's, could be problems like ten years from now.
So the answer is yes, it's a temporary solution, and that would be part of the agreement they would sign if it were to come across the private, or the city's land here this way. In the agreement that we have them sign, they are responsible for it. They are responsible for whatever level of maintenance we work out between the city engineer Greg and the developer, when we have those in the weeds details on it. And then in the circumstance, five years from now, or a year from now, we annex these in and we decide we're doing a project, we pave this road. We extend it all the way down as public access, and then we install water and sewer.
Cause we did talk about making a loop and not making it a dead end.
Those engineering details to be figured out.
I mean, I'm not a water expert, but I know that was one conversation.
Yeah, you could, you could have a main here, come across and then come up to loops it. Well, you do it.
Well, you could, if you can't. So if we create a main, then the city owns that main by that house, but right now, because it would be pri- private, it's a private conversation if they went from that house. I'm confused.
So, w- we're getting multiple things here, so I'll focus back on this one.
That's my, how my brain works.
Service lines, whatever they may be, they are considered service lines. They aren't gonna be mains.
Okay.
So they would be service lines that come in here to feed that property. If we were to do a project here, as part of that agreement we have here, we tell them, yes, you have service lines here. If and when this project occurs, you will be connecting up to that new.
And then you'd have to pay those connection fees.
Correct. So if they walk in, eyes wide open, that yes, you're gonna be paying for this connection and down the road, you're gonna be paying for another one. Because that's what's best for the city system.
I'm gonna play a game. So if we do the service line, let's say there is a break in the service line for some reason. That homeowner is then required to fix it, cause it's kind of like my house, anything that happens from this, the line to my home, I'm responsible for. So if I had a rut go through my water line, like I have to pay, I know it's more for sewer, but like if I have a drop in my line, I have to pay for it.
Correct.
They have a very long length of pipe that they are responsible for if something fails.
Right, similar to, Nick Drew has a very long length of pipe that goes.
Okay, so if there's something wrong there, they are responsible. Does he have an agreement with that property owner for the sewer line?
I would need to look that up.
Would have been grandfathered in years ago.
I just.
Well, there would have to be easement.
Yes.
Because you just can't.
Cause that used to be a road, so there's an easement there.
Okay.
So, and so, splitting it back up, if whoever wanted to develop this, put a house on it. If they talked with the owner of this property and came to terms in agreement for a utility easement, they could set that up and then they could connect their private utility service lines onto that to get it into there.
I think that's his best bet.
It is the best bet. However.
Might not fly.
They win the Powerball and move to Hawaii next week. New owners, nope, you're not doing anything about it.
So, so what happens if?
But once it's in, it's done.
Yes, once it's in, it's done.
So then when you, when they go to sell their home, they have to let, do the new owners know that there's this weird.
It would be in the abstract.
Yeah, it would be in the abstract as an easement that gets recorded on the property.
Okay. I don't know. I'm just really struggling with all these exceptions. I understand it's a piece of property that's all, like in city limits and.
That's where.
We do wanna try to, to make it okay and helpful, but it just, look at the mess. It's already kind of.
But to me, we kinda gotta take responsibility as a city, cause we screwed it up before with allowing this stuff. So to me, it's partially our fault for allowing it. It's a city property that should be able to be built on. It is a city lot.
No, I mean, I, I do agree with that.
So, I feel, you know, shouldn't have to sit on land that the city lot because we can't figure out a good solution.
Matt, did you have a question?
Yeah. No one, I talked to Nick before, Drew. And from what our understanding was before we purchasing the property north there, that that bill, that lot was unbuildable.
This one?
Yep.
It's buildable.
It's buildable and always has been.
It's just very cost prohibitive to build there.
Cause you have to.
With enough money, you can build there.
Okay, cause Nick told me the same thing. It was unbuildable.
There's no water and sewer and we won't allow well and septic, so it has to be connected to city.
So I think what what you have is a legal definition of unbuildable versus, it's unbuildable because it's gonna cost a lot of money.
I have another question.
Yes.
So it's not just water, it's sewer, because he, they can't put in a septic. How are they gonna take, can they tag off of the Nick Drew's property to put it?
Gonna tag in right there.
All of it would be taken.
See the orange line and the blue line, one's water, one sewer.
I know, but what, so, okay. I get that, but Nick originally said, what if they came off and went off our city property there? That's just water. That's not sewer. Cause they, they have to do water and sewer. It's not just water.
Yes, it's both.
So, both would come off that one.
Well, we have.
Two corners.
There.
There is one option, water and sewer.
I'm not really talking about this, cause this is a private transaction.
Correct.
So, the origination for the discussion tonight is this lot, if somebody wants to build, I was asked by somebody who called me. If I can't accomplish this, let's say the deal isn't here on the private land. Would the city be open if I connected water and sewer here and drug it across their land to get it to this lot?
I don't know enough about sewer, but is that even feasible to, like, that's a long distance for your sewer to have to travel.
There is lifts, I think there is a small lift station down there, isn't there, when Drew connected?
Uh, that's Drew's lift station, but we're not talking about Drew's line.
Oh, I wasn't sure if that.
Cause they'd also have to put in a lift station, like.
That's a private utility. It's not city main.
Got it.
So, that goes back to, I don't wanna create more Band-Aids by having a private line on another private line that both feed into the city system. Cause everybody else has a sewer line, sewer service line here, sewer service line here, sewer ser- these three aren't connected and then go to the city's line. So that would be spider webbing it on private.
Yeah, that's what I don't want.
So the, is it possible to get it here? Absolutely. With enough money, you can accomplish anything.
There's our answer.
And so what I.
But we would allow a private, so how does that work though? Like you just said, I don't want another private line on a private line. Cause the sewer right now is a private line to Nick Drew's property with the home on it. How do you create another sewer connection? Cause that's a private line.
So this section right here is ours, so they connect on to this point where it ends at ours and go into the lot, so it's connected.
So there'll be two.
Yes.
Private lines off of our one main.
Yes. Just like this is a main and we have one, two, three, four, they all connect to it.
Right, it's just, I figured it's a house set back.
Is that line big enough to withhold two homes?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the blue line looks like the same size.
The blue line does not exist.
Oh, or the.
That's actually an error in GIS. So that would have to connect right up into here and then be brought in.
Then for.
Yeah, we've been, we've been working on clearing up the GIS errors.
Oh, that's some really nice homeowner. Now, does that home, that empty lot, they own both those lots? That same homeowner? That one and?
Yes, these are under, these are under the same ownership.
Okay. That's really nice.
But the question before us tonight is, somebody who was interested in this parcel called me and asked, would the city be okay if I hooked up here and drug lines across, or buried lines, not drug lines? Made connection off of the ends here, private, private service lines to here.
And to me, if they're paying for it.
Exactly. If they're willing to pay.
I I don't know how it.
Can't really say no.
Cause, and when you talk about future things, you, well, they paid for it. I mean, it's.
Exactly.
I don't know. I just think that's opening the can, but that's just me.
And council is well within their right to say no. We don't want that.
I I just, I really struggle with not knowing what all is gonna happen and.
Yeah, but what if it's twenty-five years from now and we finally do sixty-second? And he's had to sit on that lot for twenty-five years now, because we don't wanna move an inch. That's not fair either.
Well, I.
And it could be twenty-five more years.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean.
But he knows that, right? I mean, it's still up to him, right?
So who, who, who manages that project?
Uh, the city does.
The city does? And then we.
They are responsible for hiring the contractor to do the work, but because they're connecting to our system. We approve, we approve all of it. There will be agreements in place. The city engineer looks at it, city staff looks at it.
How do you confirm they will pay for it? Like I could say, oh yeah, do it. And then I'm like, oh.
No, 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 we don't do it.
It's their people.
You don't do it.
That they hire.
We just, we just have to sign off on everything.
We oversee it, we inspect it. They pay for the contractor to come in and put it in.
So they're making all the payments to the contractor. We're just approving it.
We're making sure they're doing it according to our specs, our standards, yeah. So we will tell them how deep to put it. We'll tell them where to put it.
I mean, clearly he's at advantage of contacting the private owner, but I don't see if they're paying for it, liens.
So if we did allow it, ten years from now, I'm just throwing out a number, we do annex in all those properties. Bring down another line, tie everything in. Do we just abandon that one then, or does it get dug up?
You abandoned it.
Just abandon, leave it there?
That's what you do with, uh, when you do infrastructure projects with utility mains. You, unless it's in the way you abandoned it.
Well, yeah, that's never gonna be developed. It's a swamp, so. I don't foresee it being a issue in the next fifty years.
Yeah, it's, it's always wet there.
I don't see a downside.
As long as they're willing to pay.
Right.
And as long as they're aware of everything, you know, all the consequences and the costs. And if we do annex in five years, it was for naught.
I mean, you could tell them that, so.
I just don't foresee that. But that's.
I mean, it's all gonna be legal. It's all gonna be contracts and it's not, we're just going on an honor system here.
I, I understand what you're saying, Chad, but unfortunately, I just, I feel like we're just putting more Band-Aids on it, so. That's just kinda where I stand on it.
And see, to me, I don't look at it as anything different than like Nick showed. It's just a longer line to a house setback further.
And it's not costing us.
It's not costing us anything.
Are there a lot of other properties like this in there that may need this in the future too?
No.
So I don't know how it, I mean.
They.
That's fine.
It got messed up years ago.
Yeah.
Plain and simple.
So then you gotta deal with the hand you're given.
Exactly.
Yep, that's fine.
Everybody else?
Anything more on that?
Nope.
I do believe I have my general consensus.
All right, keep us in the loop. All right, anything else?
That is all, Mayor. We will adjourn.